Good evening. I call to order the November 18, 2013 meeting of Goss Town Board of Selectmen. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just wanted to make note that we do have a public hearing scheduled for 7:00 this evening. Sorry to that. We have some business we can attend to. Yes?
Mr. Chair, based on our earlier non-public session regarding hiring, I have to make a motion that we accept the Fire Chief's recommendation to fill a part-time EMS position.
Thank you.
Second.
Second to that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. And we have some minutes to take up. First, public minutes of October 30, 2013.
Motion to approve. Seconds.
Motion to approve with a second. Any corrections to the minutes of October 30? Can be found at tab two. Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, we have the minutes of November 4, 2013.
Motion to accept with corrections.
Second.
Motion and a second. Yes, Nick, have some corrections?
Page 13.
Page 13.
Under the draft letter to the school board's spring turnaround, spring street turnaround, and I just want, I just want to make sure that the intent was captured, and this really does, this says, second sentence, "He suggested changing a portion of the letter regarding contacting the property owners to note that the only time parking is not allowed in the turnaround is during the snow ban and on trash."
Notify the school, not the property owners.
Perfect, yes.
Okay.
That's what I was going to say.
Any others?
Thank you. That was the only thing I had.
That's how it went out.
I assumed it did, but just wanted to make sure the minutes reflected that.
Anybody else have any corrections to those minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next are the minutes of the November 7, 2013 meeting.
To accept.
To accept. Second?
Second.
And a second. Any corrections to those minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. And then finally, we have the minutes from the non-public session on November 4, 2013.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve with a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero as well. Thank you. Yes, some announcements to share. First one is a public notice. The first day to accept 2014 zoning petitions is November 11, 2013. The last day to accept them is December 11, 2013. So that filing period is open from November 11 to December 11, 2013. All petitions must be submitted during regular business hours and be signed by at least 25 registered voters that reside in the town of Goss Town. Petitions may be turned in at the Selectman and Administration Office located on the second floor of Town Hall at 16 Main Street in Goss Town. Hours are Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. If you have any questions, please see the Planning Department staff or call 497-8990, extension 117, for assistance. And I have a second public notice. Relative to the supervisors of the checklist. The supervisors of the checklist will be in session at the Town Hall in the Administration Office, room 208, upstairs at 16 Main Street in Goss Town, New Hampshire, on Monday, November 25, 2013, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for new voter registrations. If you are registering to vote, please bring photo ID, proof of date of birth, and residence address. Anyone not born in the United States must also bring proof of ownership.
Citizenship.
I'm sorry. Citizenship. That too. Do have one other announcement I'd like to share before I ask for others. I got an email recently from Inette and Dorothy Toll, who live on 12 Winding Brook Road, and it reads, Carlos Adams, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, "We would like to take this opportunity to recognize the employees of the Highway Department who are currently rebuilding Addison Road, Winding Brook Road, and Zan Drive. Watching these individuals is an education in itself. Not only are these men highly competent, they exhibit an extraordinary level of expertise, both individually and as team members. They are all professional, display expertise in their field, informational, and mannerly to the residents of the area. It would be remiss not to address the extreme competence of this crew along with the engineering staff. Goss Town should be proud to have these men as employees. We have never seen such a coordinated effort in the building of these roads as these men have displayed. Whoever hired the men with this caliber should also be recognized. Also, we would appreciate it if you would share this message with them. They are truly a work in progress. Thank you. Inette and Dorothy Toll, 12 Winding Brook Road, Goss Town, New Hampshire. P.S. All of our neighbors on Winding Brook Road are of the same opinion." Very nice email. Share that. Oh, Carl, I assume you heard that? Did you pass that along to your men? Doing a great job. It's good to see that members of the public recognize that. We certainly do, and we certainly appreciate all their efforts, so we thank them. Are there any other announcements from members of the board? No?
No.
Okay, thank you. It's not quite 6:10 yet, so, well, what do we got here that we can handle quickly? Carl, you've got quite a laundry list of things, so we won't take that up.
We're only talking two minutes.
Chief O'Brien, you're only talking a couple of minutes.
First, the first item we left, the bid packet and plan set for you to look at over the weekend for East Unbuttoned Road. This is the final section of East Unbuttoned Road from basically Mona Lona intersection down to Pollard Road. A little bit of a different, I mean, it's similar to all our other designs, a little different, though, in the bid because this is also one of the Brock's roads, so we had to kind of tweak the specs to have a contractor come in and do all the pipe work, earth work, dirt work, and then Brock's would do the grinding and the paving. So our intention is, it's about 3,500 feet of road. It's kind of putting it out this late. We hope to get a pretty good price because we're hoping there'll be some contractors looking for some early spring work, but it kind of screws up the end of the year because I'm not 100% sure how much money we've got to encumber for various other projects that are hanging around, which we'll talk about when we do the road plan update. So we're looking for approval to go ahead and advertise this, get it out to bid. Bids would be due in about, well, I think they'd do somewhere around the 14th. We'd have it ready for your meeting on the 16th for award for spring construction.
And this complete bid package was available in our room for our review.
Yep.
Hopefully folks had a chance to review it if they have.
On that, Carl, I mean, that thing is almost a ream of paper. And going through it, I did not find specifically in there where it mentions about the wear course being done the following year.
No, because the paving's done on our old contract with Brock's, the wear course would be done in 2015 as just part of our typical road plan overlays.
Okay, so it's not, okay, so we don't have it as part of that contract that the wear cost would be?
I think any pavement's part of that.
Okay, well, I was just, I didn't find, I looked through there and I couldn't find it.
Like I said, it's a little, it's a little bit odd just the way we set it up because the base course was in that Brock's bid.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Motion to authorize the Public Works Director to release the RFP.
Second. We have a second. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Carl, I'm going to ask you, do you mind taking a break for a minute? I want to get the public up at 6:10 so they can comment.
Sure.
No, that's all right. We want to get something in to fill the space, so I appreciate doing that.
That's fine.
So it's now 6:10, which is the first opportunity for public comment. If there's somebody in the public who'd like to comment, please come on forward and state your name and share your thoughts.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Anderson, 29 Joffrey Street in Penraville.
Good evening.
I've been following the budget discussions in your committee and the actual Budget Committee, and one thing has really come to my attention that has struck me very strongly is Chief Sullivan's statements to yourselves and to the Budget Committee regarding the reinstatement of a 30th officer position. And the reason that I use the word reinstatement as opposed to new is because in speaking with Lieutenant Chauvet today, to see if I have my facts correct, he said that two years ago this position was cut from their budget because it happened to be due to retirements and transfers vacant at the time. They hadn't had a chance to fill it. And I thought that the argument was quite compelling that Chief Sullivan presented, particularly at the Budget Committee, that's where I caught most of it. And I verified that there has been an increase in armed robberies, six to date just in Little Goss Town, and it started to involve citizens where instead of sort of robbing the clerk and then leaving their waiting and citizens are, come on into the store, and then they are also being robbed, which is, I think, much more dangerous, increases the level of the crime. We have averaged this summer two burglaries a day, and those people have been traced back to a ring of burglaries that were happening throughout various towns, London and Manchester, I believe Bedford. So they're bound to come back at some point. There have been 75 drug crimes to date, which is, I believe, a 50% increase, and it's not just marijuana now, it's heroin and meth. And you know, methamphetamine lends itself to people creating their little labs in their apartments, and all of a sudden the buildings blow up. We had an incident on Joffrey Street, which I've lived there for eight years, and Nancy's lived there her whole life, and it was rather unsettling, I've never known it happen before, where people, and I guess it was two, I'd say, young males in hoodies, you could hardly see their faces, were peeping in windows in our street, I believe, Hague and possibly Patane. One of them was bleeding from what, we don't know, but the canine was even up there with the police trying to track them down. So we have a lot of kids in that area, young kids, and it's just a matter of citizen safety. So I'm wondering, as far as priorities go, wouldn't that be a number one priority is to make sure that the police are properly staffed, particularly when they had this position two years ago that just happened to be vacant at the time the budget came up? And there are places that could be cut, such as foregoing raises or as much a percentage of a raise for town employees this year, retreats for library workers, and I think that probably the dues to pay to Southern Hampshire Planning Commission for traffic studies could be possibly put off. I think we've had a lot of traffic studies and probably aren't in dire need of many more. In talking to Lieutenant Chauvet, he made the comment, and I agree with it, that the police need the ability to be proactive in crime, not just chasing down everything that happens, but be able to be involved more in the prevention of crime and be able to focus on that, to stop the bad things from happening before they do. And I noticed that Goss Town High School asked for Columbine locks for their classroom doors, and I understand the reason they asked for those, but what good are those locks if the police are not able to get there because they're understaffed? I mean, when people are out sick and things happen, or a couple of people do retire or quit, there they are with empty positions, they have less officers to start with, and they really need to fill their teams full. And so, you know, it's just, it's a threat to our safety, and I think that the priority should be, number one, is citizen safety on this issue. So I'm asking you to please reconsider your determination and to reinstate this officer position, which will show all the citizens that our Board of Selectmen do actually put our safety and our welfare as their number one priority. Thank you.
Can I, I just want to make sure you understand that the school budget, separate from the budget we deal with, so...
No, I'm just mentioning something in reference that if they want those locks, we need the police to be able to get there.
And are you, have you, or are you planning to testify at the Budget Committee?
I was told you can't speak there publicly. I was going to send them a letter, but I didn't.
They will at the, at the budget.
A public hearing at the end, yes.
Right.
Oh, okay. I was just told you couldn't make a public comment.
At the regular meetings, right there, like in workshop.
I meant, are you planning on testifying at their hearing?
Sure. How does that work? I've never actually...
They will have a public hearing, probably around the second Tuesday in January.
You'll notice.
Right around that date because that's the deadline for petitioned articles, so they try to hold a public hearing right around that time.
That's not the deliberation. Is that deliberation?
No.
This is just the budget.
Budget Committee public hearing.
Okay.
Right.
Will that be advertised in the Goss Town News? Because I noticed it goes in the Union Leader, but it hasn't been in the Goss Town News of late, so will they be advertising it there too?
We typically put in the Union Leader because it's less expensive.
Yeah, but a lot of people read the Goss Town News, and I know that's the only one I read, so if they could possibly consider just advertising the hearings in there, it would help.
We will also post it in several buildings and on the road.
And we can't speak to this issue. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for your comments. Is there someone else in the public who'd like to be heard? Seeing none. We'll get back to the agenda. Thanks for your consideration, Carl. Appreciate it.
The next item I provided you was just an up-to-date copy of our road plan matrix for the season. We have not paid all of the invoices yet. For instance, the paving on Addison Road that was just completed, and we haven't paid that big bill yet. But for the most part, the projects are fairly up to date. So as you can see, if you look down at the bottom of, at this point in the season, getting rid of all the contingency, it shows that we're slightly overspent on things. But of course, we're just putting East Unbuttoned out to bid. We haven't encumbered monies yet for the drainage on Worthley Hill that we were going to purchase this year to do. There's a couple of the little things that we would encumber. My intention is that at year's end, unless we get unbelievable prices on East Unbuttoned Road, that we would, we would end up encumbering all the money that we, we got, you know, but I want to hold off until I know exactly what this bid looks like before I go buying all the pipe and stuff for Worthley Hill. So that's kind of the update. If anybody has questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
We also have a PCI index in here.
Yes, yes. I did send you, that was our, at the end of the season, you know, each summer, we, we have the interns do all of the pavement surveys, and it takes a while for all that to get updated, and typically around this time of year, we run that annual report. And as I'm sure you expected, and I certainly expected, we are seeing with the funding as low as it is, we're seeing that PCI condition dropping slightly each year. The significance of that, just to rewind history, when the road plan first started, the goal that the Selectmen set was a very gradual increase. You know, that was how the funding was based. We didn't want to jump right up, you know, but we, kind of a gradual rise over time. So that was always our goal. In the last two years, we've started to degrade in our average network-wide PCI.
So we had a high of 71 in 2011, and it dropped to, it looks like, 68 last year and 67 this year.
Yeah.
That we're looking at.
Yeah.
Nice question from someone.
Earlier, just on the, can we, this was on the encumbrance stuff, can we get the finalized road plan with all of the actual figures prior to December 16?
Yeah, I would think by then, the majority of the work would be, I mean, bills would be processed through because we're, we're loming and seeding and doing cleanup work on Addison right now, so I would think we're pretty much done with the expenditures out there. So I would think it'd be pretty close.
Any questions for Carl on the road plan or the PCI index?
Couple of years ago, Carl, you had provided, can we get a copy of the Excel spreadsheet of all of the roads with their PCI? You had given that to me about three years, three or four years ago.
As a matter of fact, that, that came with that graph, so I'd be happy to provide it.
Thank you.
It's like about a 30-page report, so I'm assuming digital.
Electronic would be perfect, yes. I think the last time was PDF, but if it's in Excel, if not, I can convert it, but if it's in Excel, it's much easier.
Okay, I'd be happy to. Yep.
Can you run a second horizontal axis or label down here with the actual funding for each year for the road plan, added to the years?
Yeah, I think so.
That would be helpful, too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
What's the status on our box culvert behind the county anyway? What's going on with that?
It's complete. The contractor is, is gone. We had, I guess I'd call it a weather condition where, you know, it got so cold, and that box culvert being what it is, it's not really watertight, we had a lot of moisture. So water got into the concrete probably quicker than it should have after the second half of the floor was poured. It's about two feet thick down there, so I don't think we have any problems, but the contractor agreed to let us hold a 10% retainer until spring. So after it really cures up, you know, we checked with Harry Weatherby at GCI, and, yeah, and they, with the temperature, the air temperature, the water on it, that concrete's going to be curing very slow, so...
We'll check in the spring.
Yeah, we're going to have to come back in the spring and do some cleanup anyways, but it went very well. Everything went better than planned, I would say. Our only concern was just that the aggregate was exposed in the final pour the next morning because the water was just coming in there. There was no way to keep all the water out of it.
And the county was okay with?
Yeah.
How the land was left?
County's fine.
Because the Board is meeting with them, and if there were any issues, then...
No, the county was terrific. As a matter of fact, we got a very nice email back from County Administrator, Winger, and he was very pleased.
Okay.
Looks good from the road, that's for sure.
Yeah, yeah. The one, just in case it comes up, the one concern we passed on to the county, you know, our job was to go down there and repair the culvert and fix whatever debris was in the, in the culvert. There's a lot of debris still in the ravine, and stuff that's just, over the years, been illegally dumped down in there. So we, we pointed it out to the county that it might be a good idea if they can get their maintenance staff down in there at some point and clean that stuff out before it becomes an issue. So in case that comes up, that was kind of the only thing we mentioned to them that we were concerned about.
But that's on county property. That's not...
Right. Right. It's just, you know, what, there's a lot of dominos that caused this that, and, you know, there was a washing machine wedged in the pipe, which kind of, was that the first domino or just one of the dominos? I don't know, but there's some other white goods on the slopes down there, so I'd hate to see it repeat 10 years from now because it was stuff.
Just a quick question. Is there any thought given to putting a grate? In some areas, they've, I've seen in culverts like that, they've placed a very gradual sloping grate so that any debris will ride up and over versus going into the culvert and blocking it.
You know, the, we actually have one of those up on Daniel Plummer Road. It is really a maintenance nightmare because debris just gets caught on it, no matter how, you know, if you, if you make the grate big enough, it doesn't catch debris, then it doesn't catch a lot of stuff, and you got to worry about kids getting stuck in there, so...
Is that vertically?
Yeah, and on Daniel Plummer, we have to go and drag with, with potato rakes, drag debris out of it, and there's no way to get down to this. It's so deep, and we didn't leave really a road to get to it, so it'd be tough.
What I'm referring to is something that's fairly wide spaced, but it's, instead of it being like this, it's like this. So most of your debris, small stuff goes through, doesn't get caught, but a washing machine, a Christmas tree, you know, something large isn't allowed to go in, and in fact, if the water rises, it actually follows that up and over the culvert.
Oh, I see. So it would get up on the bank.
Right.
Yeah, we've never talked about it. That would be good to do when we're down.
If it creates a dam, then you've got to, you actually create a pond, and it can make enough water pressure to blow everything right away.
And that's, that's the purpose of a grate like that, to prevent that from happening.
Yeah.
Okay. I assume that wasn't in the...
No, it wasn't part of the, no, and now it's all been nice and backfilled and seeded and...
Well, just to keep an eye on. Just another one of those manual alterations. Okay?
The other thing, this kind of goes hand in hand with the letter you received or the email you received, but, you know, every year, for the last two or three years, we've done surveys. You know, we're always looking to improve what we do for service to the residents, and when we do a construction job, it gives us kind of a very focused, captured audience that we thought it was a good way to reach out. So this year, we received, as a matter of fact, I just got an update this afternoon. We got a, I think we've got a total of 22 now, but it didn't really change the picture. So I just thought I would share this with the board and give you a sense of what our, these are folks on three different jobs, I believe, that have taken the time to fill out our surveys and return them to us. We make it available online, as well as we send it and hand it to people on the jobs specifically. So I think, you know, it's, obviously from my perspective, it's very overall, the ratings are very, very good. You know, the lowest, you know, most of them average in around four or, or almost close to five, which is, is excellent. The information efforts, you know, I guess that's one we'd focus on and see if there's ways we can improve it. I mean, right now, we do door hangers, you know, we use the newspaper, the website, in the project area, direct mail, so I'm not sure what else we can do, but obviously that's, that's the one that's getting probably the lowest review on the form.
That's the 3.8 one?
Yeah. Surprisingly, a lot of people still don't use the website. So, you know, promoting that as, as information, I think, because we really took a good job, I think, of keeping that pretty up to date, you know, in the construction section.
Well, I think, this issue came up, and I think some people overlook, because it's an icon over to the left.
Yeah.
They overlook that that's your construction section.
Yeah.
And they can't go to DPW and see it. It only appears there. I think there was one, what was it, earlier this week?
The CMAC update.
CMAC update, right.
Yeah. Yeah. So anyway, we'll...
Maybe repeating the Public Works page would help, so if people don't see that icon and go right to the Public Works page, the list of projects they could click on there, too.
Absolutely. So I don't know if the Board has any specific questions. Most of in the comments section or the questions section, we, we have tried to resolve any here that gave us phone numbers with questions and follow-ups, so the vast majority of that we've interacted and taken care of.
There are no comments on question three, the one that got the lowest score?
No.
Okay, any more questions on that survey, the results of the survey in the comments?
Obviously, if you folks have any suggestions next year or information that we should try to gather while we're doing this, we'd be happy to do that.
Comments, questions from the Board on the survey? Thank you, Carl, on the MS4.
Was it MS4 or was it the MAST4?
Sorry, skipped the second one, yeah.
Yeah, MAST4, the sections. It, it, it's a bit of a struggle for me because I wasn't here for that discussion when Selectman Adams reported out on the subcommittee work. So reading the minutes, I think what I read, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what I read was, at the time, we was just waiting for that third one-way loop alternative which has been provided. All of them, though not clear if you didn't know exactly where to look, but they've all been on the town website since a couple days after your meeting back in October. So I don't know what information the Board would request of us to finalize what the town's desire to proceed with are. I think where the subcommittee left off, the recommendation the subcommittee left off was, you know, for the Elm Street, High Street, Main Street, I think we were still, or the subcommittee was still on the limited build, traffic calming alternative, and as far as Pleasant Street, it was the improvement on what's there today. And as far as Pleasant Street, it was the improvement on what's there today, just trying to do some safety improvements and clean that up. McFarland Johnson's come out and done field survey. I took a chance and had them kind of focus on that intersection and not worry so much about Church Street. But doesn't mean we can't have them come back if, if so needed. But they're, they're very anxious to move forward into design so we can get ready for a spring bid package. Or a next year, next fall bid, bid package, but move it through the winter, getting permitting and designing done.
Yeah, that was your, yeah, you have captured it right, Carl. That was the consensus of, of the CMAC committee was the modifications at Pleasant Street. They call it a no bill, which is really a misnomer. Obviously, there's a lot of construction involved there, but.
Right.
It's basically taking that and improving it, improving traffic flow and whatnot. And then at Elm, High and Main, it was to just do traffic calming. Nothing else seemed to make any sense to the, to the committee. You know, islands, narrowing things, slowing traffic down, I think was the biggest thing that can be done down there. I mean, the speed that cars come through there, I think, is, is one of the biggest issues. And if you can just slow them down, I think that was the consensus of the committee. They did talk about the one-way loop through town. There were two alternatives that were presented. A third was discussed, which would brought folks through basically the parking lot here behind or alongside Town Hall. That, I think, got kind of a cool reception as well. So I think what came out of that committee was just what you heard at Pleasant Street and then Elm and, Elm and High. Yes, Nick?
Carl, with this is CMAC grant with our match. Will those alternatives be funded or do they fall into the allowable category since we're not doing the roundabout and we're?
Yeah, as long as we, as long as we change it from no build to, which has been discussed, yeah, yeah, safety improvements. They would, we have met and, and DOT did confirm that, that would.
And I would assume that the cost would be equal to or less than what we had put in to do. I know there is construction.
Yes.
But not to the degree of the roundabout and.
That's correct. Yeah, I, I anticipate, and, and there is a current estimate in the last report, that there'd be slight savings over what we projected. Enough to where the, you know, we've made a couple of addition, you know, we made the addition of the one-way loop study and we made the addition for DOT, no, I'm sorry, I'm mixing up my projects. I was thinking of the TE project. But there is, I think there's enough savings that we'll be fine with those.
So the, the action of this board would be to authorize McFarland Johnson to go on, go forward with final design of those two preferred alternatives, alternatives. Still not entirely clear what the traffic calming is at High and Elm, but that'll come out of the final design.
There was.
There is a design.
Yeah, I know there is, but it.
Yeah, I mean, it's not.
It lacks, it lacks engineering detail, but.
Well, exactly, exactly. It's a concept.
Right.
Yeah, it's a concept. And a, a big part of that, as I remember, is dealing with the new owners at Sully's on what exactly we can do along that front.
And I have a question on that. When, when you look at the design, it appears as if that parking on Mass Road is now moved closer to the road where cars are actually backing out onto Mass Road. I don't think that's a good, I, I, usually in most places, even our ordinances require that any backing out of parking spots do not have cars backing out into traffic, especially at that intersection.
Yeah, and as I recall, the CMAC committee wasn't crazy about that whole thing of parking.
Yeah, it was, I mean, it was very, and my members, very unresolved. We were more focused on the, the intersections and.
And it would seem that anything that encourages people to back is just exacerbating the situation out there and asking for accidents and.
Well, and of course, the problem we have right now is people walking, the crosswalk is behind all those cars backing into crosswalks, which is not as safe. So that, that's really the trade-off is, is, I think, in that concept. And again, we haven't talked to the new owners of that building, so we have no idea of what they'd be open to. But in that concept, we brought the pedestrians in front of the cars along the building. So it was not cars backing into pedestrians, which.
Yeah, I think something needs to be done because it's essentially unlimited access all along that side of Sully's. I mean, something needs to be done to define access there so you can control your movements and.
I also think there was a couple of concepts, I remember seeing a couple of concepts. I don't know if they presented a couple of concepts, but there was a concept that had, just had a raised sidewalk across there and what parking could be fit behind the sidewalk. So there are a couple of alternatives and obviously there's a lot of that's affecting private property, so we, we would have to meet with the owners.
Yeah, I'd like to encourage them to work closely with Sully's. They're a valuable member of the community. Need to make sure we take into consideration their business needs.
One, one thought, where that is a fairly wide section of road and the traffic calming principle is that you bring everything down, we might want to consider, instead of making their parking area smaller by adding a sidewalk, start from where it exists now and go out further to narrow the street with your sidewalk. So Sully's at least retains the same parking area.
Yeah.
Just have a raised curb in the one or two exit points versus the entire.
Very possible.
Length of the store.
Yeah, that's very possible because that is very wide, wide right away there.
Anything that's done right, if we do the traffic calming right, I think we can probably make, you know, bring Sully's around to thinking that it's, it's to their benefit, too, to control access in and out of there so that their customers have, it's easier time getting in and out because it can be a horrible experience trying to get out of there.
I know the prior owner was very interested in working with us. You know, he certainly recognized the issues there and he saw it as a liability to himself, so I can't imagine the new owners would see it much differently.
Yes.
Just one other suggestion, and maybe you could talk with the library trustees. I know they have two entrances because they want to retain both the parking down below next to the building and also up above. But if that parking that's currently next to the building was shifted closer to the building, maybe a defined walkway, you could close one entrance. Everyone could use the second entrance. They would still be able to pull in, pull into park or go up the hill. But I think that intersection would become safer because now, instead of two entrances, you'd be moving one entrance further away from the intersection.
You're talking about the library?
The library.
Yeah. I'm trying to remember what, because I believe that was also looked at, but I don't.
Well, I, I remember the comments that night where that they wanted to retain that parking, but I think you can do that by simply putting where cars pull in behind and just move everything over towards the building more.
Yeah.
But I think eliminating one entrance would make it much safer there, that intersection.
Well, I think we're at the point now where we need to authorize, I'd say authorize them to move forward with the two selected concepts to final design.
The no build build and the traffic calming.
The safety improvement modifications at Pleasant, right, and the traffic calming at Elm.
Yes, enhancements.
High, Main. Enhancements.
I'd entertain a motion to that effect so we can move this forward tonight if.
Make that motion.
Motion?
A little second.
Second, and discussion on the motion. Everybody clear what the motion is? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, she carries five zero. Thank you.
Okay. The last item I had, we've spoken a couple of times through the budget process about putting together an RFP for MS4 services from a consultant. And Alex, Kanan and myself have been working together and we've put together an RFP to do that. It's fairly comprehensive. The problem I ran into doing this, and I wanted to come and talk to you folks before I actually sent this out. If you can imagine something this large, you remember what it was like when we reviewed that permit. It was a very extensive document with a lot of requirements. I feel really guilty dumping this onto the consultant community at a time when they really don't have, you know, these proposals don't just happen, you know, they put a lot of work and a lot of their own resources and money into developing these proposals. My fear with this one in particular is they're not going to be familiar with the requirements yet. So they're going to have to spend a lot of time educating themselves really quickly on the requirements before they can develop their proposal. And as I put this together, I envisioned that effort and what would be required. And I, you know, there's, just with the economy the way it is, I just don't think that many of them have the resources to do it. We don't have an appropriation, certainly not a big enough appropriation to cover even a fraction of this. So what I've done, I did send it off to a friend of mine who's in the consulting community, who I know is more familiar than most with the requirements and the permit. And I've just asked him to just take a look at it and get back to me on his thoughts, whether we are shooting for the moon, whether it's reasonable. When I spoke to him, he has just submitted a proposal to one of our smaller MS4 towns, so it's not like he doesn't understand this. So I guess where I'm at with the board, I have it ready to go. If you want, we can send it out right now. EPA, the last we heard from EPA, which was at the NHMA conference, they have it as a goal to, to get it, get the permit issued this year, which in their mind, this year is sometime between now and September of 2014. That's when their year changes. So it's kind of a major goal for them to get it out. They did confirm that they're thinking about a six-month period before it would become effective. So I would guess that next summer or early fall at the soonest, we'll see a permit. And then there'll be a, a kind of a grace period for communities to get their hands around it. So I don't think, you know, it's, we gotta do this, this week or next week or next month. But I wanted to get the board's feeling, the board's feedback. I want to hear back from, you know, the person I sent it to and just get a read on how much work he, he sees in putting a proposal together on something like this and we can take it from there.
Well, personally, I think it's worth getting that information, Carl. I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. These requests for proposals, if they're not clear enough, it creates a lot of work for the consultants who are putting together proposals, number one. And it creates a lot of work for you, too, because they're going to flood you with questions, trying to get clarifications on your proposals. And that's going to put a lot of work on you. And I don't see the value of that. I just assume wait a, a little bit. See if we can fine tune it so we can make it more definitive, more clear to those consultants who may be developing proposals so that, you know, we get, don't get into that situation. What do you mean by this? How, how long do we have to do this? And I don't understand, how is EPA going to react to that? I can just see all kinds of unanswered questions that may come out of this.
What, what I tried to do, too, which would be very useful to us, is I, I wrote it in very separate and distinct tasks. And this is not like a bid, but I also put language in there saying that as they priced the various tasks, I wanted them to keep in mind that we may pick and choose certain things and not do others. So it wasn't an all or nothing kind of deal. For instance, one of the things, you know, as we talk through the budget process, getting a, a good ground, good water sampling program, something that we have a QAP that's acceptable to DES so that the data we gather will be credible, is very, very important. We're wasting our money if we don't do that. I've never done one of, I mean, I've reviewed a few of them. I've worked with consultants that have done them, but, you know, the lab protocols and the sampling protocols, I mean, we don't do that. I'm also talking to neighboring communities on possible commu, cooperative efforts because a lot of these things, all the towns are going to have to do, so maybe there's strength in numbers. Get together on an RFP like this to do several things, public education being the low hanging fruit. But we, we do it more on a regional basis. So there's a lot of things that I, I'm kind of pursuing and there are definitely some things that I think a consultant could really help us with. I just, the way I wrote this, I tried to be very comprehensive and, and hit everything. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure we would ever do it all. It would be very expensive to, to do it all.
Sometimes what is helpful, especially if you have time like we do, is to go out for requests for information. And it's like an RFP, but you're putting out, you know, this is the problem that the town has, this is what we want to meet. And then you request vendors to submit solutions. They're not pricing it, they're not giving away any proprietary. And then you have presentations from the vendors and from that information you gather, you can put together your RFP or you might get some innovative solutions that you, you want to explore more. But I think that might be helpful just to give us, because we have time.
Yeah, we do.
Basically, and, and you get an exposure to what else. And you might want to put into that RFI, you know, please also address a regional approach. Maybe we just have a consultant that coordinates the regional approach or, you know, all the various things you just talked about, that could be in the RFI and we're getting outside consultant ideas on how to put that RFP package together whenever it needs to be put together.
I don't recollect that we had a budget for this for next year.
No, the, the idea was we, we kept in that 29-hour-a-week position and we kept in some budget for sampling and I think the board's interest was a litmus test on would it be more reasonable to, to just get a consultant in to do that rather than hiring a, a staff person? So that's, my understanding is sometime between now and April 1st, when we'd want to hire a person, we want to answer this question.
Okay, so I guess my question then is, has any other town gone out for something like this to give us an idea? I mean, consulting usually is quite expensive.
Right.
And if we don't have enough money in the budget for that purpose, why would we go there?
And, and our other intent for the part-timer was to hopefully generate enough data to get one or two water bodies delisted.
That's what I thought that part-time position was. But, but my understanding is that at some point, this permit is going to be active and we're going to be looking at all those costs that we took off the budget this year. So from my position, what I thought we were going to do is through an RFP, RFI, whatever it is, try to identify what the cost of having a contractor do that work.
The work that the 29-hour person?
No.
No.
Just the whole thing.
Final permit work, which we wouldn't budget for till 2015.
Oh, well, you'd have to build that in because most RFPs are only good for 90 days when they submit it. So if you're looking for 2015 work and we're going out in 2013 with an RFP, that's kind of.
An RFI.
Yeah, the, the way I structured this was, it was all encompassing. It was over the five-year permit. I, I basically upfront make the assumption that the permit's not going to change dramatically and the permit conditions in the draft are what we're aiming towards. I put some language that if things materially change, obviously adjustments would need to be made, but.
What I envision is going out for an RFI, having vendor presentations. In the meantime, you're, we'll be putting some time on the calendar to get closer to that finalization of the permit. We'd probably have that part-time position start doing the sampling. The actual RFP probably wouldn't be released till the end of next year because now you'd have the final permit in hand. We'd know what's being asked of us. We'd have some data. And then if it was cost-effective.
Is there any cost to the RFI?
No.
No? Consultants do that for free?
I mean, to produce it, to advertise it, to, but.
The only problem with that is you get, you get what you pay for, so if you're not paying anything, that's.
But you're not, you're, you're looking for information to draw up your RFP. It's done in many cases when you.
Consultants see it as a way to attract business.
Right.
So they, they don't charge for these RFI's?
Not typically.
We've never paid.
No, they, no, they wouldn't, it wouldn't be much less effort than what is here, though, because they still have to research the permit, understand the permit.
That's how consultants make their business. They get contracts.
Right, right.
And that's what they want to do, so if they need to come in and make a presentation.
They see, you know, fairly sizable contracts, so it'd be worth them investing.
I think you just need to be clear in whatever we do, the RFI or RFP, that there's no appropriation for 2014 for this. We are looking to develop an RFP for the end of 2014 for work to be done 2015.
And an RFI wouldn't have any cost. They wouldn't give what it would cost. All they're doing is how they would approach the problem, how they would structure the solution.
That he says that's my ideas, too, because they're, they're probably already gearing for some of this.
Oh, they are.
Oh, yeah.
For sure they are.
Absolutely.
Every week I get something in the mail from a consultant on.
Yeah, see?
MS4, yeah.
Yeah.
They probably already got.
They didn't offer to do anything for free.
But you've got a pool of names of consultants you can send the RFI out to.
Right, yeah.
Yep.
I'm sure you get them, too.
Oh, yeah.
Postcards and brochures.
Okay, well, you know, we started, this thing actually started as an RFQ. But I, I knew we were after the, kind of getting our hands around the budgetary impacts. So I, I kind of re-twisted it to an RFP, but it won't be hard to back it.
We're going backwards.
I'm sure it can work. But again, I'll, I'll get some feedback from the consultant I sent it to and we'll take it from there.
Yeah, let us know what you find out. Wonderful. Questions for Carl?
Just a quick question on an unrelated topic. Just a quick question on an unrelated topic. I know Selectman Lemay was gonna work with you, Carl, on the Worthy Hill bushes. Have we come to a resolution on what we were gonna do there?
We're gonna move the stop line, what, three feet forward, we said, Carl?
Like, seven feet.
Seven feet. We're moving it forward. We both paid a visit, and we feel right now, the best avenue is to just move that line forward. But keeping in mind that not pushing it out so far that when the cars stop, they're coming into that line of traffic. So, we're watching, you know, we, it, as I say, what, work in progress, Carl?
Yeah, it's just a case of weather and time. We've been all hands on deck on Addison, but we'll get over there and move the line and see how that goes.
It's one of those, what's the name of that stripe that's down the plastic?
Yeah, it's thermoplastic.
Thermal, thermal plastic stripe, so...
I kind of groaned when I saw that, because it's not easy to get off, yeah. More like grind it.
Anything else for Carl? Thank you, Carl, appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
I've gotten a message that Thursday night budget hearing, there will be a public hearing, public comment portion, Thursday night's budget meeting.
Next Thursday.
There will be?
Chairman George Anthe sent that comment.
So, the public may be watching. If you didn't hear that, there will be an opportunity for public comment at next Thursday night budget committee meeting.
This Thursday?
This Thursday, I'm sorry.
That's school. Thursday is school.
Yeah, I'm not sure what...
Wednesday is town.
Yeah, this Thursday, I apologize. Okay, well, we've got a little bit of time before our public hearing. So, I'm gonna get started on the administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your weekly meeting schedule is in your packets. Wednesday appears to be a busy day with four different meetings. Library trustees, budget committee, conservation commission, and Parks and Rec. Thursday's budget committee again, and Friday is HDC at Grassmere.
So, a busy night Wednesday. And I know, Nikki said you had a conflict. I'd be willing to take the conservation commission meeting on Wednesday night.
I'm already tied up.
My Parks and Rec starts at 6:00. So, I may, depending on the amount of business they have that night, I'm gonna try to get to conservation. I may be a little bit late, but I've got an hour between the two.
So, okay, so, budget committee's covered.
Yep.
Both the budget committees. The HDC's covered. So, we're looking for, is the library covered?
I get it.
Library's covered. So, it's the conservation commission, Parks and Rec, it's the conflict, right? So, you're gonna try and Park and Rec at 6:00 and get over to, for 7:00?
And I know conservation's doing photos. I don't know if some of the other committees are doing them as well, or the... Well, that's why I will, I will get there, but I'm just not sure exactly when.
Well, if you need me, give me a call.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Consensus folder tonight. You have employee status reports, a call firefighter resignation, and a dare specialized assignment event permit. You have American Red Cross blood drive November 23rd. Goffstown Christian Fellowship has Christmas tree sales between November 24th and December 25th. Filto has Christmas tree sales for the weekends in December. And Public Library has a Sky Watch for Families on February 26th. And from Out of the Woods Antique Center, an antique show on August 3rd. You also have a right to inter for the Max Westlong Cemetery Section 1991, Lot 23.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. The Assessor has approved the equalization study, which requires board approval and signature, and intent of timber cut for map 9, Lot 19.
Okay, just a question on that. When does the equalization study have to be signed off on?
Today. It was supposed to be up there today, but they knew it was gonna be a day late.
The other, other, there's two things for my question. The other one was on the explanation of that. I think it might be worthwhile if we could get a explanation of it for some of the new members.
By the Assessor?
Well, yeah, how it works, what the equalization is. Because then he talks about the medians and all of that, just so that there was, there was an understanding of...
We could schedule that.
Okay.
Sure.
There's a lot of information in there. And if you're not familiar with it, you, means absolutely nothing.
Okay, but for now, we need a motion to accept.
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
Yep.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Enclosed at Tab 8E in your packets, a memo from the Assistant Town Administrator Derek Horn regarding the L-Chip stewardship agreement, which has been reviewed by our town attorney. Motion is needed to authorize a chairman of the board to sign the agreement.
Any motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
authorize the chairman to sign the agreement.
Second? Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. You also have a request from Goffstown Main Street Program to attach placards to the lamppost on the Main Street Bridge to promote the Nutcracker Performance that will be held at the high school. We did this last year for the Wizard of Odd performance, something similar in terms of promotion. At Tab 8E is a letter from the Goffstown Main Street Program describing the type of placards they envisioned.
I'll make a motion, authorize that.
Thank you. Second on the motion?
I'll second.
Discussion on the motion?
We have somebody from Public Works at least review the attachments once they're done, just to make sure there's, well, not damaged, but that they're safe. They're not gonna get blown off in wind.
Yeah.
For safety.
Causing damage, yeah.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. You also have a request at Tab 8F. Joshua Sharpentier requests a waiver of a $15 per hour facility use fee to use the upstairs of the Penadu Fire Station for a children's birthday party on December 2nd, first.
I had a question on that. In there, it says that we have the ability to waive hardship?
Yes, section related to waivers is section nine. Board of Selectmen reserves the right to waive facility fees when they determine hardship exists or in the best interests of the town.
None of those were identified or requested?
Just a member of the department, that's all. I'll make a motion to accept his waiver.
Second? Any questions? Is that something we typically do?
This is the first request we have had for a waiver of facility use fees. This is a relatively new policy, and this is the first time we've had that request. When it comes to, like, event permits, the waivers have been done for nonprofits, for the $10 fee for that.
I guess, if I may, Mr. Chairman. I was looking at this, and I understand that the intent of the fees is to cover any cost incurred by the town in the use of the facility. And I guess each facility is different. That's why we tried to address each of the facility. And just as a side note, this policy says, under the Grassmere facility, which is a donation, see the attached policy, but there's no policy attached.
Right, because he wasn't requesting that, so we...
Understood, but even online. This is online, but there's no Grassmere policy. Just as an aside.
Make sure to get that on.
So, I could understand, say, a facility like Grassmere that's not manned, we have to send somebody to open it up, we've got to heat it, turn the lights on, versus a facility such as Station 19, which is manned. It's a daytime request from 11:00 to 2:00. So, the building's manned, the building's heated. We're not hiring anybody to open up the building. So, the other part is that, is it clean? You know, is there a mess left afterwards? And that could be accomplished by, say, you know, collecting the fee as a deposit. And then if the facility is left clean the way they found it, that could be refunded. So, I'm kind of torn, is, you know, as, for each facility, why we would be incurring costs townwide, town-wise, for a facility like that. And I'm kind of torn. I know Joshua Sharpentier, he's a member of the department, and, but I also understand what Selectmen DeVanzis are saying, is they're requesting a waiver for hardship, but what is that hardship?
Right.
So, I, I'm not opposed to a, maybe a deposit, something that's returned. But I'm really, in this case, I don't see what the cost to the town would be. I mean, I would assume they're providing the insurance certificate. That would be a requirement.
Can I ask, can I ask a question? Okay, I understand exactly, and I agree with what you're saying. The only thing is, is if there's no fee to the use of the facility, town facility, how do we respond to another citizen who wants to use the upstairs for the same purpose?
I don't want to say it, a case-by-case basis. That same request by Mr. Sharpentier could have been for a party from 7:00 to 10:00 PM. And in that case, I would say, we would need to charge a facility fee, because the building is occupied by no one at night. So, we would have to send someone in to open up the building. There's lights that we wouldn't know. So, there is a cost incurred. And then I think that's what we tried with this original facility use policy, is to look at each thing case-by-case, because they're not always the same.
Which you're not addressing the issue. Another citizen of Goffstown wants to use the same facility the following week for the same hours. What do we do?
If they request...
The same...
A waiver of the fee? I would say we would look at that. And if it's the same exact thing, we would waive the fee.
As far as I'm concerned, as long as the station's open, when the station's open, there's no...
You done, you done with Mark?
I'm just, I think you, probably, you know, in all fairness, if we do it for one, you need to do it for all. Or you might have to at least put out for all. And do we want to deal with that? I mean, seriously, a $15 fee, it's, I know it's not a lot of money.
Well, it's $15 per hour, so...
I got that, I understand. But I'm saying, you know, do we want to tie our time up every time we want someone to use Grassmere Hall, or the hall in here, or the hall here? Let's make it, look, here it is, that's the, that's the plan, that's what you lay out. Unless, an extreme exception, I can see that, but this doesn't seem extreme or in any way, man.
Yet the conditions that the board who passed this policy set up was hardship or best interests of the town. So, you'd have to argue one of those two. In order to waive it.
If we do it for one, like you say, you do it for all, so I get the statement.
Even though the station's manned, but there's gonna be some effort put out. Where are they parking? Somebody's, you can't, somebody's gonna have to be overseeing stuff on behalf of the fire department to make sure it goes smoothly. And I don't see the hardship, and I think there is some level of effort that's extended. So, $45 for an event like this, to have a place that's heated and you can come, I don't think is unreasonable. What is, what is the date?
December 1st.
I'm sorry?
December 1st.
There, I think there's still time if the applicant wants to present what their hardship is. But I think lacking that, I don't know, I agree, I don't know how...
May make appointment to address the board to plead their...
I don't know if that's necessary, but maybe a...
No, memo, whatever. I think they'd want to...
Through Sue.
I can ask him for that. Okay.
Maybe motion to table until...
I'll make a motion to table.
Okay, a second to table? Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
And the last item I had was, due to the New Hampshire Retirement System reporting requirements, we request that call firefighters be paid on a weekly basis like all other employees. Currently, it is on a monthly basis. But it would simplify the reporting requirements of the New Hampshire Retirement System if we reported their hours on a weekly basis, and paid them on a weekly basis.
Is this cut and dry? Do we have any discretion, or is that the way it is?
Is there a cost? Is there a cost?
Well, yeah, it'd be four-page checks instead of one.
Yeah. It's four-page checks instead of one.
It's paid one hour for the, we're gonna send them a check for whatever one hour?
But is this required? Am I reading this right?
Well, it's, it will make it easier on the department and finance to report to New Hampshire Retirement System if we pay them on a weekly basis. So, it doesn't get, you're breaking up a monthly time card.
I'll abstain from this one, gentlemen.
I think it's tough, because you're just, like you said, if you get just one hour, you gotta write a check for one hour, or, you know, it works all week, or, I mean, I...
This one affects me, so I'm gonna abstain.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
What do you think?
I don't know.
Well, I guess I would, what is the time, that, what are we trading for? What is the finance time and expense for doing it weekly versus the time for reporting it? Monthly?
I don't think there is that much more time, whether you're entering a, adding up the hours for a month, or just do it on a weekly basis. It's just simpler and cleaner for retirement system.
Does this deal with, does this deal with more hours than you're allowed to have as of required by the retirement system?
Yes. It makes it cleaner for them to track and for us to report.
But it doesn't change.
Because if a question comes up, you could actually be spending more time trying to research it to answer the retirement system's question than what it's actually costing us to do this on a weekly basis.
I think the chief may be able to answer your question.
And that's what I was asking, is the cost benefit there? Is it cheaper to do it this way, or is it gonna cost us more?
Good evening. Couple of things to point out is, is we enter, we enter everybody's hours in weekly anyway, whether they're full-time or call, just so we keep up on it versus just monthly.
That's the fire department piece.
Yeah, so that's, that's collected. So, we looked at just to see what the impact was. And majority of the call firefighters get their paychecks sent to them electronically anyway. So, as far as printing out actual checks, you're probably talking two, maybe three a week, if that, if it was the case. And because, because, well, the call firefighters, you may have a call firefighter do calls one week and maybe not do any calls the next two weeks. So, we're looking at that, and anywhere from 12 to 15 call firefighters would get paid weekly. But it would vary who that was. And you're right, it could be an hour, it could be 10 hours, but it would just...
Could be 65 hours.
It could be 65 hours.
You don't go there no more.
But I don't think that, it wouldn't be a hardship for the fire department to end it anyway. But as far as finance, you're probably talking another, maybe 10 to 15 employees to get processed weekly.
Finance has requested this because of the complex reporting requirements of New Hampshire Retirement.
How many of our employees overall get paid electronically versus by paper check?
I would say majority get electronic.
Oh, absolutely. For the fire department, absolutely.
Have been a consideration to require that?
You can't. Department of Labor says you cannot, the state Department of Labor says you cannot require...
But the state can.
Electronic. They're not supposed to be able to either.
State does.
So, we don't have to, state doesn't have to live by their own...
They're exempt.
And if we put it, like, in a collective buying agreement, we can't enforce it.
I was just wondering, because at the state, you cannot get a paper check anymore. It has to be electronic or whatever.
Yep.
Wow.
Been like that for a long time.
No, not the state, it's a few years.
Well, it's a long time, four, five years.
Okay, just...
Motion to approve the payment of our call firefighters on a weekly basis.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? One abstention. Motion carries 4-0-1.
Do we have an effective starting of the first of March?
Oh, yeah.[1764.84]
Thank you.
December first.
I'll amend my motion to the first of the month.
Okay, second.
My second will...
All the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining, four zero one, I assume.
Oh, I'm on the pay, that for pay...
For the starting...
Yeah, starting, yeah, I'm outside, I'm on, I'm online.
All right, it's after seven o'clock, we had a seven o'clock public hearing to conduct, it's now seven-ten, so we'll take up the public hearing. In accordance with RSA forty-one colon fourteen dash A, the Board of Selectmen will hold public hearings on eleven eighteen thirteen and twelve two thirteen at seven PM at Town Hall, room one oh six, sixteen Main Street, Goffstown, New Hampshire, to receive public input pertinent to accepting executory interest in a conservation easement for a parcel located on the southern side of Snook Road, identified as map seven, lot ninety dash one. The public hearing is now open, is there someone here who would like to speak to the proposal?
Good evening, everyone, I'm David Neiman from the Conservation Commission.
Good evening.
And I would like to also, with your permission, invite to the table Allison Gillum from the Piscataquag Land Conservancy.
Please, join us.
She's the land protection specialist that's been doing all the hard work on this project that makes it look like I do things. Three copies of this name.
Allison, did you spell your name for the minute taker?
Yeah, it's, first name Allison, A.L.L.I.S.O.N., Gillum, G.I.L.L.U.M.
Thank you.
Sure.
No, thanks. Thank you.
Now, this project is a conservation easement, the value of the easement is being donated by the two families who jointly own it, which is Jim and Marilyn Mahoney and Christie and George Bullocken. The easement is to be held by the Piscataquag Land Conservancy. We are looking to pay for the expenses of this easement from our land use conservation trust fund, not to purchase the easement because that's being donated, but just the various and sundry expenses associated with doing, performing a conservation easement, which is surveys and appraisals, and title search and, and all the things that go on. The Conservation Commission will hold a hearing this coming Wednesday to, on whether or not to vote for those expenditures. The, so we're here tonight to ask that, if this goes through, that the Board of Selectmen would consider accepting an executory interest on the easement. Executory interest is, just simply put, a, the easement, the responsibility for the stewardship and the work associated with it all falls upon the land trust, the nonprofit land trust, Piscataquag Land Conservancy. If for any reason they should fail in their duties, or go out of existence, or, or weren't enforcing the easement, then the town of Goffstown has the right to assume all the details in the easement to enforce them. The easement itself, the land is thirty-eight point one acres, I think I was reporting it thirty-seven before, that's what was in our GIS, but the survey actually shows thirty-eight point one. It's a very rich mosaic, and you can kind of see in the, in the first year images there, just the relationship of where it is, south of Snook Road, how it's related to a lot of the open space areas there, north of town. The area, in the second page showing the topo, shows how it lies within our drumland field in town, which is something I tend to go on about frequently in these public meetings. But we have this, this portion of our town where we have all those elongated hills that you see on the topo map, glacial drumlands which are interspersed with a lot of wetlands, including most, the highest concentration of the prime wetlands in town. It's not a coincidence, in many cases, they actually act as dams or barriers that form those wetlands. They typically have very rich soil on them, and we, this area is really, really great wildlife habitat and high environmental quality because of the combination of the wetlands, the upland drumlands, which usually have a rich, mixed hardwood forest on them, all the other vegetation types. So this has always been a high priority area in the open space conservation plan to, to protect some of these regions. There's also an additional image that I included with you that shows the soils map. Another goal in our conservation plan is to try to protect some of the most valuable soils in town, and sort of have to look at the, the key at the bottom, but, but basically the two largest color areas that you see in that image are in fact soils that are considered high quality by the state. We usually talk about prime soils, and there's kind of like three groupings, the so-called farm prime land soils, soils of statewide importance, importance, and soils of local importance. In this case, we primarily have the local and statewide importance, but they're indeed good soils. So we're accomplishing a number of goals in protecting this site. One question that was asked, I believe, by Selectman DeVanzo the last time I first talked about this, is what the frontage is on Snook Road, so we looked that up, it's eighty-nine point seven eight feet in the, in the survey, unless a new survey updates that, but, and that's just on the little tip that comes up and provides access from the road.
And David, just to clarify for the folks who may be watching, there's no cost to the town as far as the cost for D research, stewardship, all of those issues that I think you've already laid out in a, in a budget, that's, is that correct?
Yeah, well, it's a one-time thing that, that we pay, that the, going forward, all the stewardship work, all, all that work will be assumed by the Piscataquag Land Conservancy.
And it also affect, affect the tax status of the property?
The tax status of the property is not changing.
All right, so it'll be no impact...
It'll be the same tomorrow as it, as it was yesterday. This has no impact on it.
On tax revenues, okay.
Because the land is already in, in the current use status.
Just a question.
Question, yes. Yeah, also, could you explain what the public use or public benefit would be?
Well, it protects two, the borders of two of our large prime wetlands in the area. It, currently, there's no restriction that I'm aware of on, on public use, it's, it's not like it's being opened up as, you know, here's an attraction, come to, there's no parking, there's nothing like that, but currently, the land is open and not posted, and would remain that way. If it were protected and went into development, then that would be the end of that.
Well, I guess, could a Goffstown citizen go there and hike through it?
At this point, yes, there's nothing that prohibits that. Generally, when we write the easements, we pretty much only impose restrictions that are necessary for achieving the goals of the, of the easement, and we don't always go into all the fine details of stuff. Sometimes they may do future logging or things like that, where there may be a period of time where you wouldn't want...
No, the, I mean, the reason I'm asking the questions because we're having a public hearing, just so...
No, no, I understand.
People. Why are the selectmen...
I'm sorry if I'm giving too elaborate answers to the question.
I'm just, I'm, that's why I'm asking about the, so people could have an understanding about the public benefit and what expectations they could have, that's all.
Yep.
They could go snowshoeing on it if you wanted to go up that elevation, I assume.
Yeah.
Eighty-nine foot wide, that's fairly steep, I haven't been on it, but it appears to be fairly steep.
Well, depends on where you're coming from.
Well, coming in, coming in from the eighty-nine, from, from Snook Road, it looked, it appeared on, on the topo.
It's not too steep, but, I mean, it is a hill, for sure. Yeah.
I think the point is, it's not, it's not closed to public access, but it's not exactly advertised.
Well, it's still a privately owned residence, so they have, I mean, as private res, you know, owners have, they could post it if they chose to, but the easement has no impact on that decision for the landowner. But currently, it's not posted against hunting or, or access.
I guess, so the primary purpose, though, of the easement is for the protection of...
The protection of the resources for, for a number of reasons, for protecting water quality, protecting our prime wetlands, protecting the habitat, but it does also protect public recreation in the sense that that's the tradition in our state and our community is that most lands, especially in the, when they're in current use, are generally kept open to the public. If you, if you go around town this time of year hunting season, and look to see where the trucks are parked by the side of the road, they're often parked at previous conservation projects that we've done, so it...
Other questions from members of the board for...
Could you just briefly talk about the real roles and responsibilities of each of the parties, the town, easement holder? What, what would residents expect? What is, what does this mean, in other, in other words? We, we understand what the easement does for the property, but what are the, the responsibilities and liabilities, I should say?
There's no liabilities that are introduced by putting a conservation easement on that's in that regard, it's just like with the tax basis, there's no change from the status in, in that regard. In terms of roles, the nonprofit land trust that takes on the easement assumes the responsibility for doing annual monitoring, you know, once a year, they go out and they inspect it. One of the, the first thing that they do is prepare a baseline documentation report which describes in detail, this is the situation on the land, and then with their annual inspections, they go out and that way if a change had occurred, if somebody went and, easement on it, but they went and, you know, put some sort of development into it, opened up a gravel pit or whatever, something that was in violation of the easement, then the land trust would follow up on that and litigate if necessary to, to rectify it. And that's, that's the, that's the duty the land trust is taking on, that's why the land trust is there, that's the reason really for their existence. As far as the town goes, because we have this executory interest, if for any reason none of that is occurring, the town at any point could step in and say, you know, you're not doing your job, this isn't being enforced like, like it was intended in that hearing, and the town could step in and, and assume, assume control over the easement, which is, which is why we're asking the town to accept that executory interest for the protection it gives us. And we want that protection, you know, if we're using funds from our conservation protection fund to do this, we want to guarantee that it gets done, that we are representing the town's interests. Thank you.
Anything else from the board members? Now, this is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public who would like to comment relative to this matter? Seeing none, it is seven twenty-three, I'll close the public hearing and remind folks there'll be a second opportunity to comment at a second public hearing that'll be held December second at seven o'clock right here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, time for Selectman's discussion.
Chief O'Brien.
Chief O'Brien.
Oh, sorry, chief. Well, he's already here once, I figured. They're done with the...
Good evening, again.
Good evening.
As the towns...
I gave them your whole packet, you sent me, okay?
Okay, we have a lot of, of material. Working with the E nine oh one mapping division for the state, as the town's liaison with that department, a couple of years ago, we're, they came to us and, and said, well, we need to, we need to map every address in town, and to make sure that they're complying with nine, nine oh one standards, and the fact that the addresses are logged in correctly in their database. So for example, when somebody calls nine oh one from a, say, a phone that's designated to a location or a house, it comes up with that address, and it's that way if, for some reason, you can't talk on the phone because of the emergency, the addresses is clearly defined on the, the screen when the call taker's there, and they can send you help, whether it's police, fire, or an ambulance. So the time came about two years ago to make sure that Goffstown addresses were all confirmed and checked and corrected, and identifying any non-standard, non-standard addresses. And over the two years, what they did was they physically drove through town and confirmed every address, so you may have seen it, there were like little white jeeps that, that were around town with a, with a decal on the side that had a plenty, plenty of hardware on the roof, and what they did is they, they confirmed the address and they actually mapped, mapped out each driveway, entrance to a driveway on their mapping system, like a GIS. And even if, there was a house that has a very long driveway, they actually mapped out that long driveway. So, so, yeah, just recently, we, we came up to, as far as like October, they came up with the last final version, because what, what they do is, you know, take a list of addresses or a sectionary of town, and then, then we would meet and confirm that all these addresses are, were good, and, and if there's any conflicts, that we would try to work the, work those conflicts out. So we've come to a point now where we've, we've come with the best product that we've been able to bring forward for town-wide approval. And so that's why in your packet, you have three things, actually. You have a form to accept the map and associated data, and here's a copy of the map, one of the maps that we recreated, and secondly, to acknowledge, to acknowledge there's non-standard addressing, addressing in town. And there was the longer list, fourteen pages of non-standard, non-standard addresses. And what this is, it just means that it does not meet the naming or the numbering standard set forth by nine oh one. Does it mean that, that a pick on my street, eleven Merrill Road, is going to get renumbered? No, it's just, just telling us that, that they're aware that, that eleven Merrill Road, the driveway for eleven Merrill appears after fourteen Merrill Road, as you approach through, 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 through the road. So is it, is it significant for us to, to sit there and try to work with the landowner or homeowner to correct? We'll have to make that determination. There's some that are, that are really close to being, needed to be corrected. For example, we have the, we have Terrill Hill Road in Bedford that, that ends with a commercials, commercial structure that, that's in Goffstown, and then we have a Terrill Hill Road in Goffstown, two separate ends of, ends of town, so when, when the alarm activation or there's a nine oh one call at the Bedford Terrill Hill slash Goffstown Terrill Hill Road commercial structure, there could be, there could be confusion that, that occurs. Or, for example, when you get called to Ashler Circle and you have an Ashler Drive, if not careful in describing where you are, there could be confusion or, or a response delay. So with that, we, we have their list in hand here, and what was interesting on, on actually page two of that, that section, if you saw it, was initially in two thousand eleven, two thousand and twelve, when the, the Goffstown zip code situation was being decided on, I should say, locally, we asked the E nine oh one to weigh in on that, and they said they had no opinion at the time. And what was interesting is, is this, this actually gives an opinion, and the bottom line is, is they, they said that the Bureau would recommend renaming the duplicate or similarly, similarly sounding streets to names that are unique to both Manchester and Goffstown, eliminating the confusion for the residents. What that means is the fact that there's approximately thirty, thirty streets in Purnaville that are under the oh three one oh two zip code, that they have the same street name in Manchester. And because what happens is if, if a person registering that phone, or trying to get that phone line established in Purnaville, is not careful, they could register themselves in Manchester. And if they call nine oh one, there could be a delay because they're going to send that call, that nine oh one call to Manchester, not to Goffstown. And we've had occasions, probably once or twice in the past six months where that, that's occurred, and it still occurs. So that's something that we would have to look at, look closely, and like I said, when it, when you're looking at thirty streets in a, in a small commu, in a small section of town, that's pretty substantial. So we're trying to, trying to look at that risk and, and find out if there's any other ways that we can make sure that, that, that duplicate issue does not occur. Also, there's some numbering issues, and we're going to look at this list and determine if it's significant enough to address.
Chief, how do we avoid the duplication in that section of town in Manchester? When a new road goes in in Manchester, do they make sure that it doesn't already exist in Goffstown?
Not necessarily, usually when we're, even when we're looking to name new roads in, in Goffstown, we're more or less looking at Goffstown. or less looking at Goffstown. We're not necessarily looking at other towns. There's a couple of occasions where if it's a road that may skirt into another town, say Bedford, we'll make sure that we're on board with it. For example, when we're looking at an alternate name for the Terrell Hill property, that commercial property that stems from Bedford, we want to make sure that new name does not conflict with Bedford. And that's something that we're working out right now. And we hope to have that resolved soon. But typically, no, one community will not check with another.
But that's the role of E-911. Once we've cleared the street, let's say in Manchester, that there's no other Manchester streets that sound like it, we submit the name to the state and they can do a search to tell us if there is a similar sounding street or confusing street in a neighboring community. So, that's where the state role comes in.
Okay, so if Manchester puts in a new road, does that go to the state before they approve the name of that new road to make sure it doesn't conflict?
It should. Does it? I can't answer that question.
I couldn't either. So, what we have for you tonight is while the crews are out there mapping each building and residence and road, is they said, well, we asked them to map each hydrant that's out there. Because one of the things that we have, we have three water precincts in town or water purveyors, and they manage the hydrants. But we're unable to get a database that's collected all the locations of all these hydrants. They did that. They did that for us as part of their program. They also mapped out all the cisterns and all the dry hydrants that were in town also. So, they're all on this map listed in here. And the last part is the data release form that's with you also in your packets. And what that does by authorizing the release, it lets them release this map data or shape files back here to the town for our GIS to work with or Fire Department, Police, DPW to work with it. It also allows this data to be released for any other public safety agency or emergency management agency for use during an emergency or disaster. So, it's real important to take a look at that also.
Are shape files what IT requires for our GIS system?
Yes. Yes. It's just a layering. For example, you know, they can layer all these residences and numbers, and then there's another layer for hydrants, and that just layers on top of that data file. So, with that, recommend that the town accept the map and associated data, acknowledge the non-standard addressing, and approve the data release for the mapping.
Questions and comments?
Yes, please.
First one, chief. On the first letter that was addressed to you, down at the bottom, and it's the first page following your memo to us, the last paragraph, it says, "By signing the data capture acceptance letter, you confirm and agree that the addresses and structures depicted in the map series accurately reflect the current addressing as it exists." Has that confirmation been made?
Painfully, yes. Painfully, yes. Again, it's a snapshot in time. What's going to happen as soon as we accept this, somebody's going to build a new road or put another house in.
Yeah, and they say that as of October 31st, as it existed.
But this is going to be the foundation that we can start from. And this is a big step for us to move forward.
Couple of things, yeah. Because we haven't had mapping completed yet in Manchester, but we had extensive conversations with the state. There's a couple of things that we should all be aware of, and the horse is already out of the barn, but we still need to know. The town has been officially notified that there are conflicting streets, addresses, and you see it in page two. First paragraph, the second paragraph, actually, is part of the first paragraph, addressing, it says, "It is our obligation to advise you that maintaining an addressing system with duplicate and/or confusing, similar sounding names and/or potentially unclear numbering subjects, residents, visitors, emergency personnel to possible life-threatening delays and response times." So, going forward, if there is an event on one of those streets that are listed in this report and there's a delay, the town has a liability if we did nothing to correct it. The next paragraph, it basically asks us, it recommends that the selectmen review all of those items on the acknowledgment of non-standard address form, and then strongly recommends that the town review these items with its attorney to identify the potential liability. The key, I think for us, is in addition to just accepting this and signing it, I think the board needs to establish a committee to develop a long-range plan to address these conflicts so that in the future, should something occur, we can show that, yes, we're aware of it, but we have been working to address the changes. And, you know, things like Pernardville, those, we've received our report, Manchester hasn't, so it's incumbent on us to address those conflicts.
Do we need a committee, or do we need to assign this to the Fire Department to come up with a plan?
It's more than just the Fire Department.
Well, a couple of things with, well, we'll start with the Pernardville. When they made the vote to stay 03102, they've taken probably a level of that risk reliability off the town, and it's still there, but what's immeasurable. Doing this in another community, in one of my previous departments, we actually had a longer list, believe it or not, of non-standard streets. And what we did is we tried to take, nibble at one street at a time, and determine, we almost categorized it either like a level one, level two, or level three addressing problem or conflict. And say a level one would be, this is a problem. Because, you know, this is going to, if somebody calls from 911 from this location, chances are it's going to be confused by responders, and it could be a problem. Or level three, well, it's the only place on the street, is it really a, you know, people will find it. And so, I think at that point, I think we almost probably have to nibble away at this street by street and classify these address conflicts in that fashion. And at that point, probably assemble a committee that includes anyone from police, DPW.
Planning.
Planning, assessing, and so on, and determine the backstory and possibly what the conflict is. For example, like they list Aileen Lane or Drive as the numbering is backwards. Well, reality was, it was supposed to connect with Benjamin. And so, that's why the numbering was, but it never happened. So, do we sit there and renumber everybody now because it, or is there a possibility that the two will get connected at some point? We don't know. So, that's that discussion at that committee level that you're talking about. Because we can make the change, and all of a sudden, you know, 10 years from now, you know, they're screaming at us for changing the numbering.
Right. But I think the important thing is we just can't take this report and file it.
Has this been reviewed by the town attorney yet?
It has not. It's here in your hands.
When do we have to act on this?
Well, the data's here, and we don't want it to get stale. That's the only thing. And so, if we can, again, this is the foundation work that we've put together, and if it's acted on within the next 30 days, I'd be happy. Before the end of the year, anyway.
We do have a recommendation of the state that we do have it reviewed by legal counsel.
I would also see if our insurance carrier would like to review it and see insurance liability.
That was my next thing.
Oh, okay.
Bring it up.
I'm sure it'd be something that they're aware of because we're not the first community to get this done. In fact, there's a lot of smaller communities have completed this because they're the easier communities to get done by 911. Now, they're nibbling away at the larger communities like Goffstown, Bedford, and ultimately Manchester.
And I would think asking for, you know, legal opinion on this, whether or not. Well, you know, at what level? And if we do, as Nick suggests, propose a plan, how much cover does that give us? And those sorts of things. I think those are answers that only I think our attorney can give us.
I think our attorney will ask us to have the insurance review because he'll say, you want to know what your insurance carrier is going to cover. They'll give you the exposure.
I think, you know, it's, now that ultimately, we're going to be made aware of it, but the conditions exist today. So, if somebody calls 911 from a conflicting address, there may be, there's a chance today that a confusion could occur.
And we have tried to address some of these.
We did.
But the difference today is now we're fully aware of it.
Correct. And whether or not we accept this, we're aware of it. That's immaterial.
Right.
It's called plausible deniability.
Which no longer exists. There's also two other recommendations further down, and one is, I believe we already have a process in place to ensure that any future street names do not cause confusion. And that, we just probably want to review and make sure it includes everything, like a 911, E-911 review, to make sure there's no surrounding.
And that's what happens now. Before the board gets the street name to accept, it's gone through the Fire Department, and they've sent it through E-911.
Everything's done electronically now, the goodness. And what happens, we propose a road name and a range and a location, and they investigate the name and make sure there's no non-standard issues that could occur.
And the numbering issue, though, concerns me because obviously, there was a change in a plan, and that wasn't conveyed to fire when they numbered. You know, if originally it was going to hook up to another street and didn't.
Right.
And so, the numbers are in the wrong direction. We should have known that, and we should have informed the Fire Department of that.
And that, this way, the process we have in play now prevent that from occurring. But in the past, for example, if somebody, we found there was one address that was an odd number on the even side of the road, but the homeowner insisted they want an odd number, because that's where they had lived before, something like that. That was their number. So, the town complied. So, but now we've got a problem.
Wow, yeah.
So, little issues like that, we're going to creep up on, and Ian will address. It's going to take years, I'll say that publicly, it'll take years to try to correct a lot of this.
The major ones of those 30 streets, the duplicate names.
What about Pernardville?
That's major.
I mean, particularly in Pernardville, because you have a such-and-such a street, Manchester, New Hampshire, and the only thing that's different from that same street in Manchester, New Hampshire, is the zip code in some cases.
Right. So, I have to ask the question, when someone from Pernardville calls in, what appears on the 911 screen?
If it's an address that we put in and confirmed with the 911, it's coming in as Goffstown.
Okay.
If, for some reason, somebody, say, gets a new number with Comcast on, say, Plummer Street. Plummer Street, Ian just adds a number to, adds a number, Comcast sees the billing, the billing address, and says, okay, Manchester. And so, it's put in as Manchester in the E-911 database.
Okay.
Until it's discovered and we change it manually.
Can we tie this in with, we're going to do an annual review on our franchise agreement with Cable to make sure we're getting.
Some quality assurance on data entry.
Right, so maybe we tie that review in with that.
Well, I'm not just picking up Comcast, it's.
But it's also an emergency call. If I'm calling from a landline, very well, E-911 would know it's in Goffstown. But if I'm calling from a cell phone and they can't pinpoint my location, I'm just saying, Plummer Street in Manchester.
Right.
That's where they're going, to Manchester.
And people need, when they call in, if they live in Pernardville with a Manchester address, they have to say, I live in Goffstown.
Right.
Many times, the question is, what's your address?
Exactly.
And in a panic situation, most people give their address.
Their mailing address instead of their physical address.
And there's some people that we respond to, they're convinced that they're in Manchester.
Right.
Yeah, there's a lot of renters, you know, they're not paying that property tax bill, and they're close to that Manchester line, and they think they live in Manchester.
I think it's an important issue that has significant liability.
Let's get it reviewed.
I would recommend we get a legal.
I'll be happy to meet, you talk with the town's lawyer on this.
Yeah, and also make sure that you bring up the point of how many times we considered trying to change.
Correct some of them, yeah.
Right.
And what we face.
I would say, I'd make a motion that we accept, acknowledge, and authorize the data release, the three items that the chief had requested, and in addition, send this to the town attorney and our insurance carrier for review of the potential liabilities and suggested remedies.
Thank you. Motion. Is that the motion?
Second.
Through the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to go. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
I'm sorry, who second Nick's?
Quick question for the chief. Chief, will the new IMC software have the capability of capturing any of this GIS hydrant information when you're dispatched? Or cistern, providing it on a tear sheet or?
That level or that level of software was not purchased, and we will not be able to do that. I'm looking into an alternative that may work just as well, if not less expensive, I should say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, just FYI, I've been working with the folks inputting data into IMC to make sure all the addresses that is listed with 911 is listed in our system.
Thank you. You're welcome. Anything else I skipped over? Public comment. It's 7:45. It is 7:45.
Yep.
7:45, a second opportunity for public comment. I don't see anyone from the public here, so we'll move on to our selectmen discussion. First thing is the committee reports, Economic Development Council.
That would be me. Meeting was of 11/6. Lions Club came in, actually Scott Gross came in, president of the Goffstown Club, and they're going to have their business expo. They're planning it for April 4th, 2014. An EDC voted unanimously to work together with them. And there were also some talk with the Lions Club about the work from the Goffstown side they want to try and put up, and they're going to work together with them also on that. There were some comments about that. And we skipped along to the Pondview industrial zoning change, and that seems as though it's going to go to the board. I don't know what the board is going to do with that. Planning board, is it? Your planning board? You'll have, you'll have some insight on that, I'm sure. Derek actually sat in, he was the, Derek Cullen was the chairman that night, and we were a little short on people, and the meeting was all over, barely true membership, so that's all I have for the EDC.
Thank you. Seward Commission, that was me. They did meet on November 12th. Alan Eaton was there to present a proposal for the development on Factory Street. It was similar to the presentation that we heard. He was advised of the commission that the cost associated with the sewers would be $5,000 per living unit or treatment unit for a connection fee and $50 permit for each separate unit hookup. The commission did confirm there was ample capacity in the sewer system to accommodate the project. Woodman Village was on the agenda, but it did not go forward because we didn't have a quorum, because one of the members had to recuse herself. So, that wasn't discussed. And then we had a financial review presented by Kathy Wooton. Just clarifying some of the stuff, there's some minor adjustments and comments. Discussion similar to others. Conservation Commission comes to mind as to the large sum of money they have and where it should be invested, and the fact that it was earning 0.02% interest or something, and it's where it was currently deposited, so they talked about different alternatives for that. The Reed Street Temple Court project was completed. The financials was completed. And then Mike Trank from Hoyle Tanner Associates, Associates, Associates presented the draft revenue sufficiency study prepared by his subconsultant. Their recommendations included funding a portion of the wastewater treatment plant's capital costs, using existing reserves, up to $1 million, to help mitigate rate increases while preparing to raise rates 4.2% by 2018. And the commission did approve the findings of that Hoyle Tanner. And the commission did approve the findings of that Hoyle Tanner and Associates report. And that was it, Mr. Commissioner.
Budget. During the week, we had two budget meetings. We had town and school. First night, opening night, town administrator gave a 2014 budget overview, covered our selectmen's agenda, wage adjustments, insurances, utilities, talked about the New Hampshire retirement system, budget line transfers, CIP items, articles in the budget, things like that. Once that was completed, Sue did her part with the town, which was done very well, I might add. The Gofftown Police Department came in, we had their review, and then on Thursday night, we had the school department, the school department came in and basically just did a, an overview, and they will, they will start this coming Thursday on the schools, and it will cover the schools one at a time. And one of the other things that the budget committee had mentioned is, do we want to look at changing our cycle in year, for budget, do we want to go January to December, or go, possibly go July to June 31st?
Like, it's a state.
Yeah, that was, that was brought up to, you know, for me to ask the board what some of their questions or concerns might be for that, and that was pretty much it. We're ongoing this week again. We're going to start Tuesday night, Thursday night, two more, one or two more departments on Tuesday night, and one more school, one or two schools on Thursday night.
So are they looking to us at this point specifically to get our reaction to a calendar fiscal year versus a state fiscal year? Or is that something that they're contemplating?
I responded that we were, we were going to be studying that.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
All right, so they don't need anything from us?
No, they don't need anything, just, they wanted me to kind of bring it, bring it forward to the board, that's all.
And we've discussed it.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. That's pretty much it.
And the planning board.
Mr. Chair. Yes. Just a couple, no, just a couple of comments, if, and maybe a suggestion. I watched the, the meeting, and I know Selectman Lemay felt very strongly during portions of our budget discussions on, on things that we, we talked about it. And I guess what I want to say is, as our representative, I know you may not necessarily agree with, as I didn't agree with some things, and as everyone, but I think it's important to put the face of you're the representative of the board versus, you know, your own feelings, and, and you need to vote.
I think I made that pretty clear, Nick.
That's good. Well, I'm just saying, just for cover as you're going forward, you may or may not, or whoever's sitting in, I think-
Yep.
Selectman Brown is an alternate. We, we need to make those votes as the representative of the board versus how our personal feeling is. And the other thing I thought of, and only because it's very difficult for any one of us to really have all of that information in our heads and readily available, it may help if maybe we took turns and an additional selectmen went to those meetings to sit in the audience, so that if a question came up where Mark or Alan was there and didn't have that information, they could turn to whoever was here, and we might be able to provide that additional piece of information versus saying, "Well, I'll get back to you in, in two weeks." You know, obviously, that would be dependent on whose schedule, who's available, but, you know, just to be able to provide, because I know Sue, you did that that night, but you may not always, you know, be there, or-
I'd be happy to be there if you want me there.
If you want to join me, Sue, I'd be glad to have you.
But I think sometimes the questions are posed to the selectmen.
The elected officials, yes.
You know, what was your thinking when you?
Yeah, because at this point, it's the selectmen's budget.
I'll just throw that out there.
Yeah, how did you guys arrive at that?
Right.
Conclusion.
I mean, Nick, Nick brings up a very valid point. I mean, I was asked, "Well, didn't you support the budget?" I said, "Yes, I did support the budget, but I'm telling you my side, my feelings." And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think I'm entitled to say that, whether, I mean, right or wrong or not, but, I mean, oh, yeah, I was, I was hammered pretty good on it.
And I found myself, I was watching, and I had, you know, I was at my leisure, I was able to kind of go through my budget notes and, you know, refresh myself, but I know that's very difficult for you, or anybody sitting here to do. But it may be helpful to have someone here, kind of in the back, that can pull up that information or provide, you know, what we were thinking when-
Are you offering? To be here?
I, I can't make that decision. That has to be, you know, the board's decision, and, I mean, they don't, I think the town is every other meeting.
Yeah.
Is that how they do it?
Every Wednesday.
Every Wednesday?
And every Thursday is a school.
Yeah.
Except for the week of Thanksgiving and Christmas.
It should be done by then.
I hope so.
Well, I mean, if we want to provide backup, the folks are available.
I mean, I don't know, I feel perfectly comfortable telling them, "Yeah, I'll get the information for you." I mean, if somebody else wants to join me, that's fine.
Well, how do we want to organize?
Well, I heard, I heard two things. I heard Sue offer, if the board wanted her to go, because she could have perhaps more of the budget information, or some of the, some of the background. Then I heard the con, I mean, Nick, Nick had a point which is valid, because sometimes they asking-
It's the board's decision.
Right, the selectmen. And, and I don't know if, if Nick was offering to go, I mean, it's up to the board, but I don't know if, and I don't, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but-
I mean, I, I just didn't want to, I think the board needs to decide if, one, they even want to do that, and if Selectman Lemay wants to have somebody there, and-
You know, and there's nothing wrong with Mark saying, "My, my recollection isn't clear on that, and if they meet every week-"
Yeah.
"-I'll get clarification on that, and bring a report back to you next week." If Sue's there, she can present the details of it, because she'll have all the specifics to provide Mark with the specifics of it, and if there's an occasional question that comes up, like I say, there's nothing wrong with saying, "Get back to you," in my opinion, but-
The only, only thing is, is when you start getting out the crunch time, budget committee does get to be a bit intense, and sometimes you're coming down to a vote, and if you don't have that vital piece of information, it can change the whole vote. That's the thing, and there's no time to say, "Well, I'll get back to you."
Well, yeah, but Sue's going to have the information, she's going to have the vote of the board. This is how the board voted on this particular item, and that's clear cut, it's in the record, it's a matter of record.
Now, here I offered, and I won't be able to do December 4th or 11th.
Derek, oh, Derek.
I mean, when it comes to the board's-
Unfortunately, he wouldn't be able to add much, because he wasn't here.
But my point is, the board's position, the record speaks for itself when it comes to the board's position.
Right, but you just don't have time when you're in the meeting to-
Right.
-look that up.
And sometimes in, in that, you know, as was said, when you're home, you're looking through this, it's a different, different atmosphere than when you're being at the meeting, you know? Sometimes there's something here, and I can't quite put my finger on it.
But aside from the fact that Sue's not going to be there at the 4th of the year, I think somebody else is in it. If she is there, say, "Well, we'll get, we'll get you that answer in a few minutes." Not next meeting, but a few minutes, you know, just talk about something else, and we'll come back around to it. And so if Sue can attend, that'd be great, but the couple that she can't, then maybe we volunteer to fill in, to be that second voice.
Get them the answer, I'll get the information for you as soon as possible.
Yeah.
And I mean, it's not, it's not like I can send it, I can send an email to Sue or Derek, and I mean, I can have them CC it to Peter or whoever needs to be the following day. I mean, we can, we can most certainly have an answer within 24 hours, and I think that would, that would suffice to-
I would say so. It would be, you know, shouldn't be ample enough.
Yeah.
So Sue, if you're, if you're available all but those two nights-
Yep.
And we can, I'm sure we can find somebody to, anybody want to belly up to the bar on those two nights, December 4th and 11th? They're both Wednesdays, right?
Yes. The 4th is Parkson American Library presenting, and the 11th will be the deliberations, the start of the deliberations.
I'm not good either, Dan, I know what I'm doing.
And I'm also trying to keep you in the loop when I provide any information, budget committee, I'm copying the board's selectmen, because they had asked for some things at the last meeting.
I saw that today. I'd be glad to go with, to fill in for Sue on those nights.
Mr. Chair, well, I look at my schedule, Wednesday, December 4th, I will not be able to make this meeting, only because it's the Gofftown Fire Rescue Association's annual supper, and I'll be cooking and tied up.
Yeah. But why don't we split them up, Nick? Why don't you take one night, I'll take the other?
Sure.
What's your preference?
Either one.
Okay, why don't you take the 11th, I'll take the 4th.
So if you cannot attend December 4th, are you attending in his stead?
I'm doing the 11th.
You're doing the 11th. Are you attending in his stead at the table?
As the second-
Or in the audience? The second, okay. So Selectman Brown would be attending, because he's the alternate to the budget committee on December 4th?
I thought he just said he couldn't do it.
Oh, you can't do December 4th? Then you need to vote another alternate to sit at the table, because only an alternate can sit at the budget committee table.
Motion to appoint the chairman.
Second.
No, I'll look at that, that's fine.
For December 4th?
Yep.
Sorry. Do-dok.
And we need to vote on it.
Yep.
Yep.
That's right, of course we do. It's a motion of the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
And we need a one for the 11th, right?
No, I would just be sitting in the audience.
Oh, oh, I told you, oh, I'm sorry.
Selectman Lemay will be there.
Okay, it was only one night.
I'll be there representing the board, in Mark's place.
Yeah, and on the other selectmen's discussion, we had the I-293 exit six and seven meeting the other day at Manchester Community College. The final public hearing has been, or not public hearing, our final gathering of the committee was done on December 11th at 7 o'clock that evening, at the Manchester All Dramatic Chambers, One City Hall Plaza, is at Nick, the address. They're, they're having an open, open house for any public comment that, that they want to have forward. So for that night, I would need somebody to sit in the meeting over there for me, so I could come here to attend the meeting over here, if we're still, if we're still in, in the discussions and in the debates.
That was this-
December 11th.
I can do that.
Yeah.
Right, because I'll be here as well.
Yeah.
This is what, can you just email me the information?
Yeah, I can do that, yeah.
Where, time, and whatnot.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna ask with your permission, I mean, I could read the, I could read the email that just, that just came out. From the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, "We'll be holding a final public informational meeting for the I-293 exit six and seven transportation planning study. The meeting will be held at Manchester City Hall, All Dramatic Chambers, third floor, One City Hall Plaza, Manchester, New Hampshire, on Wednesday, on Wednesday, December 11th, 2013, 7:00 PM. The purpose of the meeting is to review the study findings, solicit public input, and to discuss the next step in the project. A summary report documenting the study findings will be available for public review in advance for the meeting. We expect to have the reports available for review on the project website, www.293planningstudy.com, on or before December 1st, 2013. You will receive an email notice when your report is available." And I had three, three studies sent to the town. We will have one here at Town Hall, we will have one at the library, and we will have one at DPW. So if the people of the community want to come in and look at it, there'll be, there'll be three reports, they're rather, they're a pretty thick, in-depth report, that'll be forthcoming, so we will have those, but-
So 12:11, 7:00 PM, Manchester City Hall, All Dramatic Chambers?
Yes, third floor.
Third floor.
Did you forward the email to-
I could do that, yep, yep, I can do that, yep, yep. And that's the next step, if they take the next step, if it's, if it's going to happen, will be the environmental impact study on what, what could happen.
Okay.
That was the last one I had, all done.
Any other old business? I demand a new business, and that's the ordinance for Mountain Road.
Have we done with committee report?
No, we've done with committee.
We did, yeah, we did.
No, I-
Planning board.
Right, because I had asked the question about during Mark's budget.
That's okay.
That's okay. Well, I got diverted.
Your planning board did meet the other night, and there was a request for more time to build, and that was for multi-unit building, for manufacturing, and that was over on Lammy and Daniel Plummer, and that's been going on for quite a few years now, several extensions. But there was a, that was approved, the request for that was approved. He's, he's in discussion with one or two people right now, but he doesn't have anything signed, though hopefully, he does. But we'll see where that goes. And then there was a propos, a completeness review hearing for proposed lot line adjustment on Black Book Road, and that was approved. It was a small lot line adjustment, small section. The road, the road cut through the lot, so there was a small section of the lot on the other side of the road. And they owned, also own that lot that had a butter on the other side of the road, so basically what they're doing is taking that piece that was on the other side of the road and just changing the lot lines, so it'll be part of that lot on the other side.
Swapping with itself.
Yeah, that's, that's all. Then there was a completeness review and conditional use permit for, to allow the mixed use, and converting the existing mill building of what we heard from here at the last meeting, which was to convert the existing mill into some housing, adding a restaurant with no drive-through, allow repair and operation of the generating facility that's not currently operational, and allowing a building footprint of more than 8,000 square foot when the existing buildings are connected. The buildings are basically connected by the roof, the roofs, you know, cover over, so basically, you're enclosing it, and there was a request for the conditional use permits, and we did have a hearing, and everybody that was here, this speaking favorite, there was nobody that spoke in opposition to the concept, the, one of the, one of the concerns that was brought up was the type of financing for the project, whether or not it was going to have federal fin, and it was just brought up that the, that's not a condition that the planning board has jurisdiction over as to how applicant or property owner gets their financing. So after the, after the hearing, the board did grant the three conditional, there were actually four conditional use permits that were requested by the applicant, and the first one was to allow, it was the classification of which chart the housing portion was applied to, and because of the fact of the square footage, we didn't feel that it was necessary. So we granted the conditional use permit to allow the restaurant with no drive-through, we granted the conditional use permit to allow the operation of the dam and the water supply works, and a conditional use permit to allow a building footprint of more than 8,000 square feet, where the three buildings existed, existing buildings are connected, the gross footprint, when the connections were made, would be 8,600 feet, so it would be 600 feet over that. And then we had a, one that was withdrawn, which was mixed, a multifamily unit, that one was withdrawn. And in another business, we reviewed some proposed changes that the board has been initiating, and we were making, made a few minor changes to those amendments, and those will be going forward to the first public hearing, which is going to be on December 12th, first public hearing on zoning changes. And then the Pondview property, that proposal will move forward- And we were making, made a few minor changes to those amendments and those, uh, will be going forward to the first public hearing, which is going to be on December 12th. First public hearing on zoning changes. And then the, uh, Pondview property, that proposal will move forward as a planning board initiated zoning change on that one. And then, um, there was, issue was brought up about the smart code. And there was quite a bit of discussion on that. Because that's something that the planning board really didn't have anything in front of us. And there was quite a bit of discussion as to what the planning board has jurisdiction on and what they don't have jurisdiction on. And that something is not brought to the planning board, that it's not an appropriate thing to be voting to put something on the ballot. Unless it's been at the planning board and the planning board has had a public hearing on it. So, after all of that discussion, there was a motion that was made. I'm going to try to remember exactly how the motion was worded, uh, which I probably, um, but basically wanted to bring the smart code, place the smart code on the ballot. And after much discussion on that, is how could you vote on something that you've never seen? Then it came up, well, it was online, but the final product is not a product that anybody's ever seen. Several members there have never, I've never seen it, never been presented. There was discussion because we were, we were looking at documents that Brian Rose had given to us and we were making changes on them and we didn't vote specifically on them and we set to go forward to the public hearing. And I brought up the fact that that document was presented to the board at a public hearing, it now became a public document. So you could move forward with that, what, it's been presented to the board. But anyway, uh, vote was finally taken on that and there were, uh, zero yes votes. Four, uh, three no votes and four abstentions on that. And I believe the abstentions, I know my abstention was because I, I can't vote on something I've never seen and something that's never been voted, uh, been presented to the planning board, so.
Just a quick question for Phil Mark. Now, my understanding is that any zoning ordinance proposal must be based on the master plan. That the master plan is what sets the foundation for all zoning. And since the original plan, Pernardville, if you will, was voted down and not accepted and is not part of the planning board, planning, master plan. That any smart code zoning amendment would be illegal because it's not based on anything in the master plan.
Well, I, I, and I, I agree. And that was brought up, but it really wasn't expanded on because that, in order to get to that point, you have to have something presented to the planning board. So if the, there was something that hasn't been presented to the planning board, there was no smart code presented to the planning board to be voted on. So, that's where the crux of the, of the discussion was, is because.
So you don't know if it fits into the master plan or not?
Never got to that discussion because it was never presented, I don't know was in the smart code. I cannot have that discussion, I cannot vote on something that I have not seen.
Right, and I understand, I follow that, I follow, but even if, even if people wanted to vote on it, you couldn't put an, you know, a innovative type.
And UCM measure.
Ordinance that is not based in the master plan.
If, if you, if you can't make the argument that we shouldn't be voting on it because it hasn't been presented to the planning board. That are, getting to the master plan is, is fruitless because we shouldn't even be there at that point because it hasn't been presented.
Didn't we correct? Brian presented to the planning board? Thought we voted.
In fact, there's Brian to talk to the chairman of the planning board, put on the agenda.
Well, what happened was, there was a discussion at the planning board and the members at the planning board saw no reason to do anything with it, so Brian left there as, as such. Okay, so then it was brought back up again and there was quite a bit of, quite a bit of discussion, you know, about that, so. Whether, you know, procedurally, I don't think that the motion was even appropriate procedurally because you're voting on something, you're trying to act on something that has not been presented. Then there was some, uh, discussion about workshop training, uh, to be, uh, at Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. And some of the topics that came up were conditions of approval, types of conditions of approval, uh, such as why is it that sometimes some barriers come before the planning board? There's a team, various, those, these, uh, also discussion about the sixty-five day clock, uh, the understanding of the illegality of making timely decisions and takings. And what types of issues or requirements could be considered as taking, uh, were some of the subtopics, uh, that could be useful on our train. And that was a long night, we got out there at five, five minutes of the way.
Yes, you have your two required public hearings. And, um, I recall that much public comments.
Right.
Right. And so you have the final, um, language, that's how they.
Make a motion that we accept the, the ordinance, which is known and cited as parking, standing or stopping of vehicles prohibited on the west side of Mountain Road between South Mast Road and Noel Crest Road.
With a discussion on the motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Another new business. I'll have to go back into, down, probably, certainly, we have a non-meeting, yeah, I'll win that.
Two quick items, uh, one, just going back to Selectman Avanza's planning board, um, report, when we had our presentation from, um, Mr. Eaton, the question came up, uh, was determining the legal status of Factory Street, whether it required an easement or if the road went, can we get an update on?
Yeah, I, I sent out an email to Carl and, um, the response from him, um, I, my understanding was the board wanted to, um, move in the direction of the town right away, extending the town right away to that law. And so, um, I haven't had time, Carl's done the research, but I also have time to travel and I was going to review that too, fully, including the legal costs. Because I know there's like two different ways to do that petition or you can just lay it out.
I know, I hate to go through that though, if something, some like.
I think you could spend more time, hours researching than, uh, just laying it out. So Carl's off working on the cost to the board. Not only the process, but the cost.
Do we have the, do we have the valve sheets?
No, I don't have the sheet.
I mean, I seriously think it's, it's worth taking a look at the valve sheet, what's on the valve sheet, or contact Alan and see if he has one.
Alan thinks he's done his research on it and unquote.
I'll get Alan. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's just, it will be a, that's the status.
That, that's all, I just wanted to make sure that we were moving on then.
Yeah, now I saw Alan file it and I'm trying to discuss it.
One other item, the other item was during budget discussions I, I had requested and just wanted to see the status, if we could get a projected surplus report from our department heads.
Um, actually I have finance to do that, and just before it shut down. I saw a response from, um.
That's fine, if you could just send that to us, huh?
Okay. Um, actually, I think he's responsible more to deal with, um, the 2012 surplus, how much was in expenditures and how much was in revenue. So I think, yeah, I wrote it, he needs to get more information from department heads regarding this year's surplus. But so that he know, um, remember how we were discussing how much of the surplus was from under, being under-spended, under-spended and how much was from additional revenues? Who did get, who got, once you. 2012 surplus, um, sources for 2012 surplus, under expenditures were two hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Overage and revenues was three hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. We have to put a breakdown by Charlie, three hundred thousand. He's, he's, um, estimating, and I, and I don't think, this, this was done very quickly, I don't think it touched, a lot, to the, uh, department head. The extra revenue will be due to the contribution holiday, which we have in the 2000 surplus and revenue and, um, probably an additional hundred thousand in revenue. It's about two eighty-two in revenues, um, he's not assuming anything on expenditure side, he's, he's expecting us to be very close.
That's, that's why the importance of having the department heads provide those projections.
Yep. I could forward this to the department head, and so, he's, he's, um, four of them told me that it's expected to be back. So that just leaves admin and what is. And I was tight because if you, you need software implementation and overage and legal.
I know, I apologize. December 16th, um, I think is when Carl mentioned encumbrances.
Yep.
Can we ask for all the departments, if they're coming forward with encumbrances, to also provide the vendor contract, whatever it is that's obligating them to that encumbrance versus just the issuing of the purchase order?
Yes, uh, but according to Tim Drescher's opinion last year, when this whole issue came up, we would give a floor, if there's a contract, it doesn't need to be a vote to encumber by the board because it's already encumbered.
Contract is, is a vehicle.
Right. You've awarded the contract for a specific amount of money, that is. Yeah.
So then we wouldn't have anything coming before us for encumbrances?
The only thing she would have is if the order was placed just on a PO and we didn't receive the invoice yet, would be a probability to pay for it in January, you would need to encumber it.
Right, all right, so we're still going to need some.
Yeah.
Oh, that's it. Thank you for asking.
Thanks for asking. All right, so we're going to adjourn our public portion of the meeting, so folks watching DPD 16, you know, we're going to go to non-public.
Do you want to leave at ten?
Yes. We're going to go into non-public and there are saying ninety-one, A, three, two, subparagraf B, I am. Yes, yes.